I call the three P M session of the December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. Like to welcome all of our visitors, remind you if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the agenda item, matters presented by the public that will take up this evening as agenda item number twenty-one. Again, welcome, each and every one of you. Thank you for coming out and being part of your county government and the functions herein. Our first business item of consideration is the items of the consent, which is agenda item number five. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the item consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one. Mr. Diller joining us by Zoom, Jennifer. At this time, I'm going to call on delegate Eric Phillips. He is going to have a special presentation.
Thank you, Chairman. And so, does this swing this thing around or do I look at y'all?
Whichever's the best way for you to read it.
I'll read it. So, I have a commending resolution from the Virginia House of Delegates commending Tommy Slaughter on his years of service to really our area, both Henry County and the City of March for all the different events in the state, particularly Henry County Board Supervisors. And so, the way these things work is they go just like the bill would do it before, they're voted on and passed, and then we get to do one of the better parts of this job, which is to give them the good feedback. I was happy to recommend it, and they were glad to pass it from Mr. Slaughter. So, I'll read it. It says, whereas in two thousand twenty-four, Tommy Slaughter retired from the Henry County Board of Supervisors after sixteen years of outstanding contributions to public safety and economic development in Henry County. Tommy Slaughter served the community for many years as a law enforcement officer and retired member of the Martinsville Police Department. Desires to be of further service, Tommy Slaughter ran for and was elected to the Henry County Board of Supervisors for a position in the Red Creek District and first took office on January first, two thousand eight. During his tenure local government, Tommy Slaughter invigorated the economy in Henry County by supporting programs to construct shale buildings and gray lots, develop a Duke and Willie Passage Trail, and establish a partnership to build workforce housing. Tommy Slaughter helped recruit several new businesses to the area, including Press Glass, Crown Holdings, Eastman, Monogram Foods, Drake Extrusions. Tommy Slaughter oversaw the construction of Meadowview Elementary School and the Henry County Adult Detention Center. Tommy Slaughter spearheaded efforts to rename seven bridges in Henry County after the cease law enforcement officers to honor their service and sacrifice. Tommy Slaughter's prowess achievement was instituting a professional emergency services department with paid staff, a fleet of ambulances to better serve and safeguard the residents of Henry County. Tommy Slaughter also represented Henry County, the West Pea Mountain Planning District Commission,
here, and the service to the county that you gave so freely of yourself doesn't go unnoticed,
boards for fourteen years. Whereas, after his well-earned retirement, Tommy Slaughter plans to seek new opportunities to pursue serving the community, spend more time with his wife, Wanda, their children,
and it still continues.
and her grandchildren.
So, you left a legacy of service that all of us strive to live up to, and we thank
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the House of Delegates that Tommy Slaughter hereby be commended on the occasion of his retirement from the Henry County Board of Supervisors,
you so much.
and be it further resolved that the clerk of the House of Delegates prepare a copy
That takes us to agenda item number seven, the consideration of a resolution honoring
of this resolution for presentation to Tommy Slaughter as an expression of the House of Delegates admiration for his legacy of service to the residents of Henry County.
Rita Shropshire. Mr. Pruitt, I believe that you have a resolution for the board's consideration.
With that, goodbye.
Yes, I do. This is a resolution honoring Rita Shropshire. Whereas Rita Shropshire has been a dedicated and influential member of the Henry County community for over six decades, demonstrating exemplary commitment to public service and civic responsibility. And whereas, as the youngest of seven children born and raised in Carroll County, Virginia, Rita has carried the values of hard work and community involvement throughout her entire life. And whereas, after marrying Howard Shropshire in nineteen sixty-two, Rita became a cherished resident of Henry County, raising two daughters, Joyce and Rachel, in Ridgeway. And whereas, Rita has made significant contributions to First Baptist Church of Ridgeway as the church clerk, Sunday school teacher, deacon emeritus, and chairperson of the Women's Missionary Union, demonstrating her unwavering faith and dedication to her community. And whereas, her volunteer efforts extended to the ladies auxiliary for the Ridgway Volunteer Fire Department and her fifty-year membership in the Order of the Eastern Star Martinsville Chapter Number Sixty-Six, where she served two terms as worthy matron, exemplifying her spirit of service. And whereas, Rita's commitment to the electoral process is commendable, having served as officer of election for twenty years and as chief for twenty-eight years, along with her five consecutive terms on the Henry County Electoral Board. And whereas, during her fifteen years on the electoral board, Rita tirelessly worked to uphold electoral integrity and efficiency, training precinct workers, and implementing new voting technologies. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Henry County Board of Supervisors honors and commends Rita Shropshire for her remarkable contributions to the Henry County community, her unwavering commitment to public service, and her dedication to fostering democratic processes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five and one, joining us by Zoom, Jennifer. Mr. Pruitt, will you, and I'm going to ask if Dawn, if you'll come forward, and members of the electoral board that are here present, if you would like to come up as we make this presentation.
stretch of your county. I'd like to review to check that we have some, and then I'll tell you a couple of things. This certificate is appreciation and recognition of your exceptional and professional dedication to the protection and enforcement section of our elections and the right to vote for the citizens of Henry County, and for your commitment to promoting voter rights and election voter participation for the past fifteen years or five times on the electoral board with sixty-three years of total service. I would like to say thank you. It's been an honor, and I just wanted to say I know that Liz was here for a long time, and you took a chance on me, and I forever debt. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your service, Rita, and again, you've set a benchmark and a milestone that others could only desire in their minds to achieve. The longevity of your service is unmatched by hundreds upon hundreds of people all throughout Virginia and this country. So, thank you again for your service. Agenda item number eight, we'll have a presentation of F Y two thousand twenty-four audit from Credle Jones and Associates, and we have with us Kim Jackson. Kim?
Pages one through eight represent the manual discussion and mouse suspension to summarize the financial results for the fiscal year in this format. Pages nine to nineteen represent the basic financial statements. Pages nine and ten are on a full or full basis for the county. These statements include your capital assets, your long-term debt. However, the county maintains its full on a modified full basis, which is reflected on page eleven through thirteen, which will be the statement that you'll be most familiar with. Page eleven is the balance sheet for the government fund, which includes your general fund, which is the main operating fund of the county. On page eleven, your total fund balance for the general fund is nine seventy million, which is a decrease of eight point eight million from the prior year, which you can see on page eleven, your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. The decrease is primarily due to your debt service, which is the payment on the adult detention center to pay off the Series twenty nineteen one. On page eleven, also shows the unassigned portion of the fund balance is forty-four million. This is the portion of the fund balance that has not been assigned, committed, or restricted for any specific purpose. Unassigned fund balance at the end of the fiscal year is thirty-eight million, so your unassigned fund balance has increased approximately six million. However, fund balance is calculated using the modified at full basis of the county, not your full or full basis, so it's not taken into account your long-term debt of the county, which stands at approximately eighty-two million. Pages fifteen to seventeen reflect the financial position activities of your private funds, which are the Marina Fund and the Self-Injurious Fund. The fund balance for the Self-Injurious Fund is now twenty-five million, or an increase of eight hundred and thirty-one thousand for the previous fiscal year. Pages eighteen to nineteen include shared funds. These funds include other trusts and other points of funding benefits in the shared fund, which includes the American Fund and the Special Welfare Fund and Health and Social Services. Pages twenty to one hundred and one represent the footnotes to the financial statements, which are all of the areas required of disclosures that are required under accounting standards. Pages forty-two to forty-six are footnote nine, disclose the county's school and social services capital assets and chief of duty. Page forty-six to forty-eight, the fourth footnote thirteen is your long-term debt, which reflects the Barnes on the audit, the adult detention center and school debt. Pages forty-eight to fifty are footnotes related to your leases and the description of base information technology arrangement, which were newer committing standards than the original in the past two years. Pages fifty-five to ninety-eight are all of your required disclosures in relation to detention and oath. And beginning on page twenty-two start your required public information, which is probably the ministry school schedule in Henry County, the budget to actual compared to the revenue and expenditures, which shows your original budget, the elaborate budget, and then your actual revenue line item and standard side of the department. Pages one to eight to one ten were the same schedule with the other government funds. And pages one eleven and one thirty-two include more information related to detention and oath. And followed by that reflects the Special Freedom Fund and your school fund's financial position and financial activity for the fiscal year. Your schools are the largest cost center for the county and the revenues and expenditures is down on page one thirty-seven. One forty-one to one forty-five include the same information for the ADA and social services, followed by the national fund. Pages one forty-eight to one fifty-three is your other information section, which has various financial data comparisons, comparing ten years and trends analysis, your revenue and expenditures, tax assessment, tax of levies, collections, and other information. Page one fifty-five, four, start the compliance section. This is your auto-report independent financial control compliance over major federal programs and compliance with common Virginia laws, regulations, contracts, and grants. All of the things will be modified in hand, respected as well. There's a lot of financial information in the one, we'll package for, for the years.
Mr. Jones, do you have anything to add in regard to the preparation of this audit report or our role from the finance department?
I think it's a, this shows the county's in good financial condition. We got a positive, strong fund balance, but also, as you mentioned, we need to keep in mind, the debt, long-term debt is not reflected in that fund balance, so that needs to be taken into account in making decisions going forward of the debt service. Needs to be factored into that fund balance, but we're, county's got a positive, strong financial position at this point, in my opinion.
Right, thank you. Mr. Wagner, anything to add?
Let me just add briefly, we hired Credle Jones and Associates to do the audit for us, but it takes a tremendous amount of work from county, schools, staff, social services staff to get it done and get all the information to the auditor. So, let me publicly commend Chief Financial Officer Darrell Jones and his finance team, school employees that work on the audit information for social services and the other entities. It's truly a process that takes months to accomplish, and I think Kim will agree with me that team providing that information gets it to very long time and a very professional presentation, and that's one reason that our fees are so low with Credle and Jones is because they get good, accurate information from us. So, I just want to say thanks to the staff.
Board members, do you have any questions before I call for a motion to accept this audit? What action does the board desire to take in regard to this audit that we've been presenting?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the audit for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five and one, joining by Zoom, Jennifer. Thank you, Kim. Agenda item number nine, we'll have a report on delinquent tax collection efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grinsteph. Scott, welcome.
Thank you. This is a report as of end of November of twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-four, personal property collection was ninety-one point four six percent of the twenty-three personal properties taxes during the month we collected sixty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars. Real estate collection as of November twenty-ninth, we have collected ninety-five point nine percent of the real estate taxes. We collected ninety-one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars per month. Since January one, two thousand twenty-four, T H C S has collected seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Our debt set off total that we collect this year is three hundred and ninety-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars. So far in the month of December, we've had eight D M D stops collected. Just happens to ask me to talk about our sale on December second we had here, supervisor in the board's office room. We sold, I think, thirty-two, thirty-three parcels that day at eighty-six, people at ten. I think it went very well for us. Just this past week, we received a check from, sell two years ago for excess funds that come into the county, which I consider found money, which I will be asking for in the spring, sometime. Want to bring that up, but we're really glad about the audit report because I think our department and Commissioner's Office has a lot to do with that also. You know, every dime that comes into Henry County comes through our office, so thank y'all.
Would you explain the process just briefly as to why we receive funds from two years ago? And again, that's a court action, I understand.
Yeah, when we do a judicial sale, which is the one we have to go to the circuit court for, any funds we collect that day that are excess of taxes and expenses that are held by the corporate court that are held for two years, gives time for heirs or any other parties that, you know, want to try to claim them, have an opportunity, two years. That's why we have, that's why the check I got today, which was a sale, December of twenty-two, I said it was close to sixty-five thousand dollars. And I think since two thousand eighteen, I know we've collected probably over half a million excess funds due to the work of selling this property and getting new owners on the books helps us collect taxes too. But I think it shows how we're conscientious of getting this property back on the books, getting new hands and new owners of the effort. I sent the Commissioner's Office and the T H C S where we'll do probably two sales a year since I've been in here. So, we're real proud of that effort we're doing.
All right. Does anyone have any questions on Mr. Grinsteph at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number ten, we'll have an update from the Martinsville Henry County Economic Development Corporation. We have with us Mark Heath. Mark, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have an opportunity to bring you a short report mainly for November and parts of December. As you can see, from your handout, we held Valerie Harper, rather held on November sixth, a workshop on outbid for state contracts, there were twelve participants, two agencies, Henry County and the Virginia Museum that participated, and that was well done. Dine Small has again been held Friday after Thanksgiving. There were twenty-one restaurants that participated this year, seventy-one percent of over six hundred tickets were used. The winner again was Captain Tom, sixty-seven, and Manny's was close second, sixty-six. But you can see the dinner restaurants, all twenty-one, that were visited. This again is a program that's done annually to try to get folks to try a restaurant that they might not otherwise have gone to. On the marketing side, the unglum rate of October is attached. You can see that we've turned it back down to three and a half percent for October this year. It's interesting that this is exactly the same unglum rate we had a year ago in October, so there is some sort of seasonal, seasonal aspect to this at play, obviously from year to year. We continue working on redoing the Yes Martinsville website, the Visit Martinsville website has been updated and redone. It's on the line for anybody that would like to look at that. Yes Martinsville will be, come pretty close after that. On the eighteenth of November, Gray Swob was here, Gray is a preeminent consultant, Mr. Wagner, and others were with us. Gray was formerly Secretary of Commerce in Mississippi and also ran Enterprise Florida, so we were glad to have him here for a couple days and see our community firsthand. We've submitted two, we did submit two great applications, the V B R S P program, which is supported by the state with fund site development. We have been approved to go to full applications, both at the, I'm sorry, at Conwell Crossley for Lot Three and the Patriot Center for what we call Patriot Two, which was the prime property, where is the prime property. There are at least fifty to sixty million dollars in this pot. We're going after visionary money for both, much like we did at Conwell Crossley a number of years ago, so we're hopeful about those grants. Tourism had forty site visits locally, there were eighteen package request information that were sent out. You can see the locations they went to. Two hundred and fifty-five of our activity guys went to seven different businesses, staff attended, Virginia Tourism Corporation, V One Governor's Tourism Summit, over seventeen thousand e-glass went out, that's on a bi-weekly basis, two hundred and fifty quarterly newsletters have gone out. In workforce development, we were awarded a two thousand twenty-five Tourism of Rivals grant that helps us, helps our staff have access to state dispersal information from a mobile location sites dealing with district traffic. So, that again will help our tourism efforts. We have staff that's working on potentially putting together a youth program, this is for young professionals working in Henry County, Martinsville County industry, and would help, the focus is to try to get them more involved in our community so that they will stay here long term. And we're going through some focus reports to see if we want to carry it forward. Our staff is met with Patrick County and the Visits Southern Virginia Group as we try to work as a region all across outside Virginia. And we had staff that attended, again, V One Tourism Conference. Sarah Hodges did that, she also represented us at a consulting event in the last month. If you have any questions, though, I just try to answer.
Board members, do you have any questions on Mr. Heath at this time? Mark, thank you. Agenda item number eleven, we'll have a discussion on Board of Supervisors' participation in board meetings by remote, electronic, or telephone access. County Attorney George Law, will you give us some background on this?
Yes. Currently, the board has no policy governing electronic participation in meetings, so by default, members of this body can dial in and monitor the meeting, can speak remotely from other locations, but they cannot make motions or vote. If the board would like to adopt a policy to do so, the Code of Virginia spells out what it must say. Mr. Pruitt asked me to prepare a potential policy for consideration, and that's what the board has in their packet. Essentially, there's kind of two categories. On the day of the meeting or before the meeting, someone would tell the chair, I can't be here, and it's either for a personal reason or it's because of a temporary disability. And you can only, up to three, up to three meetings a year, or twenty-five percent, so this board has twelve regular meetings a year, you could do that three times a year, essentially, if the board adopts this policy.
This is for young professionals working in Henry County, Martin Luther County industry, and would help. The focus is to try to get them more involved in our community so that they will stay here long term. And we're going through some focus reports to see if we want to carry forward that. Our staff is met with Patrick County and the Visit Southern Virginia group as we try to work as a region all across outside Virginia. And we had staff that attended, again, V1 Tourism Conference. Sarah Hodges did that. She also represented us at a consulting event in the last month. If you have any questions though, I'd just try to answer those.
Both members, do you have any questions on Mr. Heath at this time? Mark, thank you. Agenda item number 11, we'll have a discussion on Board Supervisors' Participation in Board Meetings by Remote, Electronic, or Telephone Access. County Attorney George Law, will you give us some background on this?
Yes. Currently, the board has no policy governing electronic participation in meetings. So, by default, members of this body can dial in and monitor the meeting, can speak remotely from other locations, but they cannot make motions or vote. If the board would like to adopt a policy to do so, the Code of Virginia spells out what it must say. Mr. Pruitt asked me to prepare a potential policy for consideration, and that's what the board has in their packet. Essentially, there's kind of two categories. On the day of the meeting or before the meeting, someone would tell the chair, I can't be here, and it's either for a personal reason or it's because of a temporary disability. And you can only, up to three, up to three meetings a year, or 25%. So, this board has 12 regular meetings a year. You could do that three times a year, essentially, if the board adopts this policy.
Okay. Boards had an opportunity to review this. Do you have questions or any part of this that feel needs tweaking before we consider One of the questions that I had asked Mr. Law is if this was all encompassing when the board votes to approve participation all the way through a closed meeting session and reaffirming that we only discuss closed business during that time. And so, again, equipment would have to be placed and/or reconnected once we're into closed meeting, and then any recess sort of puts us into a lull before we would reconnect again for our evening meeting. And I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that. Mr. Law, is it basically we can unconnect and then reconnect?
Correct. I mean, the logistics.
Once a vote is taken.
Right. And so, at the beginning of the meeting, the person would state their reason for not being here and where they are, and the board would vote and allow them participate. The only reason the board would vote not to allow them to remotely participate is because they can't be heard or clearly or seen to participate. It's got to be, there's really no discretion for the board once you adopt this policy. If you can see and hear them or hear them, if it's just a phone, then they have a right to participate remotely. So, and if we went to closed session, we could, without taking a new motion, they could simply disconnect and reconnect up in the closed session meeting room. And likewise, when closed session ends, they can come down and participate remotely again.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything that we need to discuss in regard to this?
Given my situation, I have worked for more than two decades a lot remotely and had a lot of telework. I just wanted for the people here to also, George, what would be the reason for the absence?
So, I believe it says out, it says, "If honorable for the day of the meeting," number one, "Someone notifies the board chair that such member is unable to attend the meeting due to a personal matter and identifies with specificity the nature of the personal matter, and the board records in its minutes the specific nature of the personal matter, the remote location from which the member participated. If their participation from the remote location is disapproved because of such participation would violate the policy, then subsection B, such disapproval shall be recorded in the minutes." As I said, the only reason to disapprove is because you can't hear them. It's not a good connection, essentially. And that, those are limited to three times a year. That's one, a personal reason. So, I mean, it could be vacation, it could be anything. If, number two, if a board member notifies the chair that they're unable to attend due to a temporary or permanent disability or other medical condition that prevents the member's physical attendance, and the public body records that fact in the remote location in its minutes, upon the member stating the location, the reason the board shall vote, and provided the connection is good, the member participating remotely, in either case, is not counted toward the quorum. There must physically in this room, if the meeting's in this room, we must have a quorum present, so a majority of the board must be present physically in this room. The member participating remotely is, their votes will be counted, their motions will be accepted, but they are not counted toward the quorum of a meeting. The, and those, by my reading of the Code of Virginia, if it's for a temporary disability, they are not limited by the three times a year. Those would, could be more if the person's disability or reason for not being able to be here goes longer.
Again, I think I understood when you said it is limited to three, but it could be more?
If it's, if the reason is, because the limitation in the Code of Virginia that they propose the boards adopt who want to do this, the limitation of three is in the section for personal matters. There does not appear any limitation if there's a disability. And I know, I mean, I know of one other location in Virginia where the person has done this for an extended period of time, and, you know, not around here, but in another locality, that question came up, and that's how it was interpreted there.
Well, if it's three that's allowed for, and to be able to vote, can a person, and I'm just tossing out something, monitor the meeting but not be allowed to vote?
Right. That's how, I mean, that's interesting. Yeah, that's right. I guess if they, if they've used up all their three, they could still participate the way members do now sometimes, I guess Mr. Dillard's on today. They monitor it remotely, and you can speak as the chair recognizes you, but you cannot vote or make a motion. So, I guess they could do that if they'd missed their, if they'd used all their three meetings remotely, they could do it that way if there was still a need for more, if it's for personal reasons. Again, my reading of it is if it's for a disability, then you could go beyond three meetings participating remotely.
Under normal circumstances, how many times can a board of supervisors miss a meeting even if they don't vote? You know, I'm understanding that they can miss them three times and still have the right to vote, but how many times can they miss a meeting?
Okay, so, there is, if I understand the question correctly, there is no attendance, unless I'm missing something in our bylaws. The state law does not, I know this sounds ridiculous, but the state law does not require you to come to these meetings. Okay, so, I think probably a poor decision not to, but you, there's no attendance requirement. If you miss many meetings, you don't lose any rights or privileges. You might not get reelected, but you lose no rights or privileges by the Code of Virginia. If our bylaws say something else different, I don't think they do. There is no attendance requirement, and there's no consequence to missing meetings at all, except that you are not present to vote now. So, as this policy would amend it, it would make it easier to participate when you can't come to the meetings, is what this policy essentially does.
Up to basically three times unless you get medical issues.
Right.
Let me add to that question. It's interesting you asked that because I got an email today from Virginia Association of Counties wanting to know what board policies were on attendance, and your bylaws does not have an attendance policy in it. However, as a board, you could adopt an attendance policy. Typically, any consequence from failing to abide by that policy would result in censure, not any dismissal. You don't have that authority or anything. And if you happen to run the runoff times, or the case in Montgomery County, I think where they are issued a censure for one of their members on the board for not attending meetings and what they thought was not enough in attendance. So, you could, if that's of interest, you could add that to your bylaws. I just always mention that, that Bacon's putting that question out there today because apparently it's been discussed in other localities. And while I'm talking, so I can let you get back to it, if you decide to move forward this policy, right now, our technology in this room is very limited. It's not ideal that participants on an iPad are in the corner. So, it will take us a little time to come up with a better solution than what we have now. We can make it work, but it's not an ideal situation. We don't have any true video conference capability in this country. And then, just, I just add that what George mentioned is the maximums allowed by the regulation. You can adopt any policy that you wish up to the maximum. So, if you decided to change terms, you certainly could do that.
You know, personally, I, you know, I believe that you do need to have regulations on how many times a person can miss without, before we, you know, censure them. Not to say that we have any problems here with the board supervisors that we have here or any that I've seen in the past, but, you know, just to safeguard, you know, the supervisors. I think supervisors need to have an input on that. Anybody else feel the same?
I'll let the other chair.
I just brought it up because attendance via technology is an option. It's the 21st century. I personally strongly believe in in-person meetings. There are circumstances, obviously, where people can't attend or can't be here, and that's one reason. I felt like that I just needed to open it up for discussion because then these types of discussions that I have experienced in the past, things start coming up like, is a technology available? How many absences? What are the reasons for? If you serve on some state boards, there are regulations for when you can and cannot attend virtually and when your vote is or is not counted based on ordinances and things. And I just, I just know that, and also for the constituents, I feel like it's important if we start doing this, then they, they are fully aware of what we decide.
And I'll, I'll add to that. I asked Mr. Law to bring this up. I travel for my full-time job, and there are occasions that I'm out of the county, but I could very well participate from my hotel room in the evening. So, that's why I personally asked him to do this, because the two I've missed this year was both work-related.
And I, I think that all of us understand that, that part of it, that it, I think what we're not talking about is the rule. We're talking about the exception to the rule. And Mr. Ryan, I think you make a good point, as well as what Mr. Wagner brought up. Yeah, it's been media attention. I've seen it on three different media outlets on what's going on in Montgomery County, and I think that it's a legitimate concern. And Dr. Kowly, you bring up, you know, we owe it to our constituents for being here, but by state code and not just what we want to do, we can't vote on certain financial matters unless we have a quorum here, and even with that, majority?
So, the policy requires a quorum to be present.
To have a meeting.
Right. So, you can't even have a meeting unless a quorum is present here, and then the majority vote would still apply with online.
There was, how many's a quorum? Three?
Four of six.
Four for, yeah, okay.
And certain vote, from the hearing standpoint, require a roll call vote. So, if you can hear that roll call vote, yeah, that's part of it. Ms. McCallum, do you have anything to add to that or any concerns?
No, I've really never seen over the years any of the officials here take advantage of it. I mean, they always have a legitimate reason why they're not here, so I don't have a problem with it.
All right. Do we have enough in front of us? And you all have had a month to look this over to make a decision on this, and if this carries through with a vote, it will be part of the bylaws that we adopt at our organizational So, with that, I'll entertain a motion if someone so desires to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the document for the Board of Supervisors' Participation in Board Meetings by Remote, Electronic, or Telephone Access.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion at this point? All in favor? There's five with one joining by Zoom, Jennifer. That leads us to Agenda Item Number 12. We'll take up financial matters. 12A, An Additional Appropriation Referencing Vehicle Insurance Settlement Funds for Public Safety. Mr. Wagner.
The county has received an insurance settlement check of $26,398, and Mr. Tatum is asking for the funds to be reappropriated back to his vehicle fund in order to replace the vehicle that was totaled during the accident.
Okay, the board has background material on this as well, as well as Mr. Tatum's here. Should there be any questions? What is the desire of the board in regard to this additional appropriation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $26,398 received from the vehicle insurance settlement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? There's five with one joining by Zoom, Jennifer. 12B, An Additional Appropriation Referencing A Vehicle Buyback Parks for Parks and Rec. Mr. Wagner.
This is a very similar scenario, although it was not the result of a automobile crash or accident. It was the result of a vehicle which fell in the category of the lemon law or something very close to that, and the dealer was very generous in buying the vehicle back. And so, we're asking for reappropriating the money received from the dealer of $49,975 so we can use it to purchase another vehicle.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriations of $49,975 received from Ford Motor Company.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, let me add.
Yes, sir.
Well, the original vehicle, you know, we purchased on lowest bid a lot of times. The original vendor for this vehicle was not in Henry County, and I just want to give kudos to the Nelson Auto Group who helped us navigate going through this process of getting the buyback, and so, Commander, please stand up.
Great. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? There's five with one joining by Zoom, Jennifer. 12C, An Additional Appropriation Referencing Justice Assistant Grant for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Wayne Davis is asking the board to appropriate grant funds in the amount of $14,489 received from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. The funds will be used for overtime hours to provide high-impact law enforcement in areas experiencing increased growth.
In regard to this additional appropriation received from the gag grant, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $14,489 received from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five with one joining by Zoom, Jennifer. 12D, An Award of Contract for Replacement Vehicles for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Wayne Davis is asking the board to award a contract of $215,871 Haley Ford located in North Chesterfield, Virginia, to purchase five 2025 Ford Police Interceptor All-Drive Utility Vehicles at a price of $42,174.20 each. These vehicles will replace five existing high-model vehicles within the Pro Division, and pricing is based on the Virginia Insurance Association Vehicle Procurement Program specifications, and funding for these replacement vehicles included in the fiscal year 2025 schedule.
What action would the board like to take in regard to awarding of this contract?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board award a contract to Haley Ford for $215,871 to purchase five 2025 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicles.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five with one joining by Zoom, Jennifer. Agenda Item Number 13, Consideration of a Date and Time for the 2025 Organizational Meeting. Mr. Wagner.
So, the Board of Supervisors is required to have an organizational meeting on or soon after the first business day of the new calendar year. During the meeting, the board will set its meeting dates for 2025, and elected chairperson and vice chairman will adopt their bylaws for the next year. With that being said, the next business day is Thursday, January 2nd. So, I would ask you all to consider a date for that meeting. Staff schedule is open on Monday, January 6th, and Tuesday, January 7th as well. So, any of those dates work well with staff. It's up to you all. What you want to do?
My calendar's wide open, so I will work with any date for anyone else.
Monday, the 6th.
Same.
It's fine. The 6th, the Monday, the 6th.
Monday, the 6th, and what time of the day?
I'm wide open there.
I'm open also. I prefer an early, not like, well, early morning, but after lunch or lunch and then, and then beyond, into, into the afternoon, evening.
Yeah, it, I'm fine with any time personally. So, if we want to make it a little easier on staff, 3:30, 4 o'clock range or something works for everyone, or?
1 P.M. is good with me.
It's fine with me too, yeah.
What time?
1.
1, does 1 o'clock work?
Yeah.
And generally speaking, that meeting, that meeting is generally a half hour or less. Okay. All right. I will accept a proposed date for that in the form of a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to select January 6th, 2025, at 1 P.M. for the 2025 Organizational Meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? There's five with one joining by Zoom, Jennifer. Agenda Item Number 14, we'll work to have an update from the Martin from Henry County YMCA. Mr. Kinkma is not feeling well today, so that will take us to Agenda Item 15. We'll have a brief update from the Blue Ridge Regional Library. Good afternoon. It looks like I ran everybody out. But I guess I could talk to y'all. I've been meaning to get to this for a while, so my apologies for the lateness of this. But I wanted to touch base on our summer reading program because it's been pretty very successful. We consider it very important. We started off with a kickoff with the Pirates of Tahitmont at Stone Hall in Patrick Henry Community College campus. We had 140 attendees. They invited the kids to come up afterwards and play instruments and dance around and enjoy all the music. I understand it was very well-received. Excuse me. Our, we offered the summer reading program to prevent the summer slide. Many of you heard me talk about it before. Just to remind those who may not know, children and teens who attend summer reading programs perform better academically and experience greater gains in their academic performance than their non-participating peers. Participants outperform non-participants on tests across all measures and grades, kindergarten through eighth. The effect of summer reading programs did not differ by gender, limited English proficiency status, or economically disadvantaged status. So that is one of our main themes for summer reading. We don't bring it up with the kids because they don't know what summer slide is. We want them to have fun, so we have prizes for them. The people who read the most in different age groups, we have children, teens, we even have adults. And so one of the things we've done in the past is we've also offered summer feeding. And in the past, we did, we had lunches prepared by Henry County Schools. It's provided by the USDA. But in the past, and I'm not, not for the schools for doing this, but they've changed the way the program works. I'll quote Karen Barley, who said it succinctly, "Since the schools are now delivering lunches to homes as needed, or they can go to school and pick up seven breakfasts and seven lunches for the week, we decided to only serve snacks at the library this summer." The pros are that the snacks are shelf-stable, so we don't have to toss out uneaten, uneaten food because the USDA would not allow us to keep it. It had to be tossed out, and we hated doing that. We also do not have as much mess. Makes it easier to hand out since it's prepackaged and ready to go. So far, it's worked great. We haven't had any complaints. We don't see any cons to serving snacks only. So, and this particular year, the three branches gave out 887 snacks. So that's usually like a bag of chips and some juice or various things. It depends on what they bring us. As I said, we have children and teens, and we also do outreach, which is to daycare programs, things like that. And the three branches in Henry County provided a total of 71 programs with 1,728 participants. So we were really happy about that. And we even had 84 adults participate in summer reading. We have a contest for them as well. They can win a gift card. And so we hope to encourage other people to do that as well. But anyway, one of the things we want to mention that we're doing right now is we have a food for fines program where if you bring in a non-perishable food item, you can get free child. You bring, you can get a dollar knocked off of your fine if you have a fine. Even if you don't have a fine, we do have people who bring food in just to donate. This year, it hasn't been as popular as it has in the past couple of years, so we extended it. It's going to run through this variety. All the food donated in Henry County is given to the Salvation Army for them to use in their food program. Just FYI, in Pappy County, it goes to Pappy County Food Bank. So that's one of the things we've done for the past several years, and we're kind of glad that we can help the community out in that way. And I got to hand it to all my staff members because without my great staff, we wouldn't be able to do this. And mentioning my staff, just a reminder, in January of 2025, the minimum wage goes to 12.01 an hour. And we are experiencing salary repression. So don't be surprised if we come back with a increase in our request. And so we're hoping to have something for you along those lines in the next month or so. But anyway, I wanted to thank you all for letting me speak today. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them if I can. Question? All right. Thank you, Rick. All right. And happy holidays. Merry Christmas, everyone. That takes us to Agenda Item 16. We'll begin with informational items, comments from the board, starting with Dr. Cobbler.
Just again, Merry Christmas to everyone. And it's been as a board member, it's really fun, and it's considered a privilege to get the invitations that we get to participate in the parade. And the the Christmas activities that are going on in the county, in my opinion, have just been extraordinary. So appreciate all the the great events at Christmas.
Mr. Pruitt.
I don't have anything.
Ms. Buchanan.
No, I'd just like to say again, the coat dry for kids, as well as the shoes for the soul is wrapping up. And we've had great participation, and I think a lot of children have benefited from it. And it's because of the generosity of the community. So I do want to thank everyone for that because you've hopefully made a lot of children happy this year.
Mr. Bryant.
Well, then I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday season.
Great. I want to give special recognition to those that made the public aware to come out and discuss this last night. There was a very good attendance. And Ms. Buchanan, Mr. Pruitt, and Dr. Cobbler attended. But to county administration, and very specifically to our communications effort with Brandon, as being Public Information Officer, getting the word out and good communication is what gets people involved. It was close to 100 people there last night. I don't know, did anybody get a head count or whatever? But for something that is a good thing. Sometimes you can't get people to give you an opinion one way or another. Now, there will be an ongoing survey, as I understand it, that will be, again, part of our communication effort is to see how many people that we can get to participate in that survey. And this is in regard to the Mayo River State Park planning stage. One other survey that I think is very important, and I don't know the numbers specifically, but I'm going to yield in just a moment to Mr. Wagner to in regard to the comprehensive plan survey. So I'm going to give give it to you now.
And I may defer your question to Mr. Brandon Mark as well, because he's been kind of keeping tabs on those surveys and responses to that. If that's okay, I'll ask Mr. Mark to answer your question.
And you may want to come to our microphone.
So we wrapped up the community survey portion of the comprehensive plan process on December 15th. From the last count that I heard from the Berkeley, we had about 650-ish people that participated through that. But we also had various focus groups throughout the community that we had people come out, either put on. And also, the website is still active. So if people would like to go on there and play around the interactive map to plot things, they still have the ability to do that, as well as participate through our ID wall. So as with the Mayo River effort, the process is not done. We're still taking input from the public. And we encourage everyone to take that opportunity so we can know what we need to put into this plan to reflect their values.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Other items, Mr. Wagner.
Just a couple of items. Just a reminder, county PSA office will be closed on Tuesday and Wednesday for the Christmas holidays. Our convenience centers for recycling and garden supplies was closed on Christmas Day only. And if you want a little bit of trivia, local trivia, the busiest day of the convenience center all year is always the day after Christmas. So if you can wait till the next day after Christmas, go ahead. There are people at our roughly site. And then the last item is, I have a special presentation that I made. All of you are familiar with the Virginia Association of Counties and the tremendous job they do representing you all, the board of supervisors across the Commonwealth. One of their premier programs is the Virginia Certified County Supervisors Program. And I'm pleased to report that we've had one of our own complete this program. It's a year-long program that involves in-person meetings, Zoom meetings, and the like across the year. So if I could, I'd like to present this plaque from the Virginia Association of Counties to Travis O'Pruitt, Henry County, class of 2024.
I'll let Mr. Pruitt get back to his chair, and I'm going to ask him to give us a brief comment. I understand that VACO has also asked you to participate on another level. Would you share that with the rest of the group?
Sure. I was invited to attend a or serve on a steering committee. So for 2025, I will be working with VACO on the Community Economic and Workforce Development Steering Committee for Virginia.
Mark, look out. We got one that's, congratulations on your efforts there. And we appreciate you representing the county in that regard, as well as others that have represented the county on some different summits. Most recently, Dr. Cobbler, a couple of months ago, was at a rule.
The governor's rule prosperity.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, great. With that, I will entertain a motion to go into closed meeting if someone will cite the items as allowed by the Code of Virginia.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into closed session under 2.23711A1 for discussion of appointees to the Public Service Authority, Anchor Commission, Building Code Board of Appeals, Fire Code Board of Appeals, and the Ninth District Development Financing. 2.23711A7 for discussion of pending legal matters. 2.23711A3 for discussion of the acquisition disposal of real estate. And 2.23711A5 for discussion of as-yet unannounced industries. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? There's five with one joining by Zoom. I'll see you all upstairs in five minutes. The board came out and closed meeting on a motion by Mr. Bryant, second by Ms. Buchanan. Mr. Powell, will you poll the board, please?
This is a board member's request to acknowledge only public business matters law exempted from open requirements and the credit for any sections. 2.23711, were heard, discussed, or considered in the public meetings. How do you vote? Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Cobbler?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pruitt?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Countywide appointments. Dr. Cobbler, I believe that you have appointments from the Anchor Commission for the board's consideration.
Yes. I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to reappoint Jeanette Hurd, Pamela Randall, and Bonnie Faverro to the Anchor Commission for the term to expire December 31st, 2028. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five with one on Zoom, Jennifer. Building Code Board of Appeals. Mr. Pruitt, I believe that you have appointments for the board's consideration.
Yes, I make a motion to appoint Charlie Martin, Rodney Clark, Bruce Atkins, Eddie Light, and Larry Wright to the Building Code Board of Appeals for another four-year term ending January 31st of 2029.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? There's five with one adjoining by Zoom. Fire Code Board of Appeals. Mr. Bryant, I believe that you have appointments for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reappoint Darrell Emerson, Aitch William Martin Jr., Ken Atkins, Joseph Joe Scars, and Joe Barnes to the Fire Code Board of Appeals for a length of four years, expiration date January 31st, 2029.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? There's five with one joining by Zoom. Ninth District Development Financing. Ms. Buchanan, I believe you have an appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board reappoint Barry Jarrett to the Ninth District Development Financing Board for a two-year term that will expire December 31st, 2026. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? There's five with one joining by Zoom. Mr. Pruitt, I believe that you have a real estate action for the board's consideration.
Yes, I moved that the Henry County Board of Supervisors execute a deed conveying 19.64 acres of property containing Phase 6A of the Dick and Willie Trail from the board to the board. The purpose of this conveyance to be the enactment of deed restrictions on the property in compliance with the Land and Water Conservation Act of 1965.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? There's five with one joining by Zoom. Mr. Wagner, do you have any items before we take a recess that we need to consider?
Let me say Merry Christmas now, because I forget later.
Okay. Board members, do you have any items? Did you all know, not officially as a board action, that yesterday was Jennifer's birthday?
Oh, happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
She didn't know. I told her upstairs I was going to bring it up. Of course, I waited until the room became a little bigger.
41 years old. That's amazing.
But officially, happy birthday, Jennifer. We'll stand in recess and start promptly at 6 o'clock. I'll call this 6 P.M. session of the December 17th, 2024 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors back to order from our recess from the afternoon session. Like to welcome all of visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda Item, matters presented by the public that will be later in this meeting as Agenda Item Number 21. Again, welcome to all of our visitors. Thank you for coming out and participating in the affairs of the county. Our first item is Agenda Item Number 18, general highway matters. We have with us Dave Kowalski, B. D. Dave, welcome.
Good evening. I just have updates on two upcoming construction projects for you all tonight. The first one is the Daniels Creek Road 220 pedestrian improvements down here in Collinsville. It is scheduled to have the construction start on January the 6th. The other one is the improvements there at Dow Store, Dow Street Road in 220, where the stoplight is there, where the beat-off residency influence is at. That project was a part of a bundle that included 11 other locations from Rondo County down to to that one. That contract was just awarded, and we hope to get the contractual schedule soon on when they plan to do that particular improvements. And that's all I have.
Okay. Board members, do you have anything for Mr. Kowalski to say?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. And I haven't communicated this with anyone, but recently I received a request to discuss the or to ask about the speed limit on Oak Level Road. And is that something, is that something that we work with you, or how does that happen?
Yes. What we would have to do is submit a, we'll go to a traffic engineering division to do a speed study, safety study of it to to then determine if it does want both of us speed limit or not. Do you know what part of the road?
Well, it's just I received recently an email. Well, it's just I received recently an email, and I hadn't really thought about asking you about it until now. I just, the process for that, I just thought I would ask you the process for that. And if this, if this constituent, this individual is concerned about it, then he or she could just call your, your office.
Yes, they could call our office and, and say what they told you, and we would then get that studied out, just so.
Okay. The other thing is the, recently someone asked about an area for rumble strips where there seems to be an inordinate amount of accidents, and it's the, it's the, I want to call it the cloverleaf, but it's coming from two twenty north, and you can go straight towards, stay on the bypass and go to Ridgeway, or take a right and go into the Stanley Town Basset area, or loop around and go to Collinsville, that, that area, which is in my district. I did receive an email about the possibility of looking into something that's similar, I think, up towards horse pasture, rumble strips. And I just, and I just, again, I just wrote this down. I thought I would just ask about it because I've been meaning to ask about it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what requirements we, we look at for doing, but we, like you've seen, we do put them in places, and that's something we can check into.
Okay, and, and, and the same thing, if, if a voter or a constituent in the area has a question about it or a concern, they're also, they can just contact you as well?
Yes.
And would you give me, I know I can find it, what is the telephone number there?
Two seven six six two nine twenty-five eighty-one.
Okay.
Eighty-two goes directly to you.
Or, or to your, or to your office, yeah.
Eighty-two will both go to the main lines.
Okay, thank you.
It may be eighty-two.
Thank you, that's all. Thank you.
All right. Any other items? Okay, thank you for being here tonight. At this time, I will take up agenda item nineteen. We have Parks and Rec will do a presentation for, for some of our fall sports teams. We have with us Daniel Reynolds from Parks and Rec. Daniel, we're going to let you lead the way on this.
Hello, how are you all?
All right.
So we're getting a chance to recognize our fall sports champs, and in the fall, we have flag football, we have tackle football, we have girls' basketball. They start practicing in September, go to September, October. Just about everything's done by the first part of November. Had a great turnout this year. Had almost five hundred kids playing five different sports. Tonight, we have our Axton Mount Oliver Flag Team and our Axton Junior Tackle Team. So we'll introduce the flag football first for seven and eight-year-olds. We have Axton Mount Oliver coached by Stephen and Shelby Rogers. They finished the regular season with a nine and one record, and then went on and won the tournament, end-of-season tournament. So anybody from Axton Mount Oliver Flag come over and snap a picture.
So we're going to get you all on stage, okay? Three, two, one.
Next up is our Axton Junior Tackle Football Team, which is for nine and ten-year-olds coached by Dionne Yellow and Luke Boone. So guys, come on. They finished with a perfect eight-and-o record and then went on and won the championship.
Can everyone see me?
Yes, I can.
All right, ready in three, two, one.
All right, I'll tell you who won our eleven, twelve-year-old senior tackle division. That was Laurel Park. They finished with a six-and-o record. I don't think anybody's here. So that side of the county was well represented in football this year. Girls' Basketball, Martinsville, put a team in our league, and they won the junior league and the senior league as well. That wraps up our fall season. Now we're moving on to boys' basketball, girls' volleyball, and I will see you guys again in March.
Hey, Daniel.
Thank you.
Give these, give some of these to those kids, would you, that played before they all get gone? Give them a special, thank you.
We'll give them just a few moments to clear the doorway, and then we'll get right back into business. Agenda item number twenty, we'll have a public hearing on a rezoning request, R dash twenty-four dash fourteen, Jose Tiznada and Margarita Rodriguez. Mr. Wagner?
Property is located at thirty-seven Porcelain Road in the Reef Creek District. The property is shown on tax map five point eight ten slash B, and the applicant is requesting the rezoning of approximately point two-three acre from commercial District B one to mixed residential District M R. The property is currently occupied by a double-wide structure that was previously used as a commercial office. The applicant wishes to bring the zoning into compliance for residential use and financing purposes. Following a public hearing, both planning commission and the planning staff recommends that the rezoning request be approved.
I'll open the public hearing to take any input on this at six ten P M. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this rezoning application? Seeing no hands or no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six ten. Dr. Cobbler, I believe this is in your district?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the rezoning request as presented.
Can we have a motion to approve the rezoning request? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion as second, any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one attending by Zoom. Best wishes to you all. Is there anyone desiring to address the board under the agenda item, matters presented by the public, which is agenda item number twenty-one? Seeing no indication as such, or hearing none, that takes us to agenda item number twenty-two, if a board member would desire to make a motion in regard to adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion as a second, all in favor? It's five with one attending by Zoom. Everyone have a good evening and a Merry Christmas.